All right, thank you, everybody. We're live on YouTube and it's being recorded. I first just wanted to kick off by saying thank you to everyone for coming. This has kind of been a dream to get a joint meeting going. Should we start with call to order before I actually open?
Yeah, let everybody open up their their meetings first.
Okay, I'll call the select board meeting to order and just we have one board member online, Malcolm McNabb, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have Matt Fee present.
Yes.
And Don Hill here and Brooke is not on yet, so. Who wants to open that?
The Board of Health is here. We are all here. I'm Anne Smith, the Chair. Mary Lefery, Karen McKenna.
Tom Dixon.
I'm going to order this, but Dave Iverson's away, so I'll open up our meeting, so.
And Dave's online.
Dave's on, oh, awesome.
Thank you, Joe, here.
You're welcome.
Brian Sullivan, Forable Housing Trust, I'll open the call, the meeting to order. We have members, let's see, Peggy.
Forrest Val, here.
Forrest, Mary, is anybody else here?
I'm here.
Abby, sorry, I'm sitting in a fat spot. And Abby's here, great, thank you.
Perfect. So I just wanted to start by saying thank you to everyone for getting together as both this, all the select boards going through their strategic plan vision, the planning board is going through their master plan, and the Affordable Housing Trust is going to be kicking off their housing production plan. We really wanted to have a chance for all boards to meet and discuss kind of how we're all working together and advancing goals around housing. And this really kind of came as an idea around seasonal communities when we met in April that Provincetown did this, and I thought this would be a nice opportunity to replicate that on Nantucket. So I'm gonna pass it over to Judy Baer, who we've hired as the facilitator for today's meeting and who's prepared a lot of the information to pick us up.
Thank you. I know some of you, but I don't know all of you, and I'm wondering if we could just maybe go around and do introductions. Not that I will retain all your names, but it would be a nice thing maybe start with, so. Why don't I start with you?
I'm Kristy Barantella and I'm the Housing Director for the town.
I'm Moby Gibson, Town Manager.
Don Hill, Select Board Chair.
Tom Dixon, Select Board Member and Board of Health Member.
Matt Fee, Select Board.
Matt, well, tired, sorry I'm late. Planning Board, Planning Commission. Thank you.
Mary O'Connor-Mack, the Executive Affordable Housing Trust Member. Hillary Hedges-Raidford, elected member of the Planning Board and so serving on the Planning Commission and the Social Visibility Advisory Committee and also having background in some of the challenges we have.
I'm Anne Smith, I'm the Chair of the Board of Health. Drew Cooper, Board of Health. Mary Lefery, Board of Health.
Karen McKenna, Board of Health.
Forrest, Forable Housing Trust Member. John Kitchener, Planning Board and Nantucket Land Trust. Board Member.
Those top on the Planning Board, NBC, CPC, Madigan Area Plan.
Anything else?
No, that's, that's just down.
So I'm hoping you all have copy of this, we all have the agenda, things there need to be, change your schedule, let us know. So just a little background as to how we ended up with this agenda as opposed to some other agenda. When Kristy first asked us to meet with all of you, she suggested and it made sense to me to try to meet with the Chair of each Board and staff member if possible, just a little background on maybe what people's expectations were coming into the meeting, any concerns they had that perhaps might make sense to discuss, and we were able to meet with most people, I know Amy could not join the for the Board of Health, but I understand that, it's fine, I think Melissa could have joined me there, so it was all right, we talked to everybody. And out of that came, I think, these sort of common denominators of three key topics that made sense to discuss, one of which was just around how decisions are made in the permitting process. Housing needs and the variety that exists here and perhaps what the priorities should be. And then year-round housing, and it seemed like those were sort of good things that we could probably package into a two-hour session. But I think before we even get there, just a couple of things I'd like to say as sort of easy ground rules, I would like to keep this as informal as possible. But one thing I might suggest is if you have a lot to say, which is fine. Make sure everybody else gets a chance to speak before you jump in again if you feel particularly passionately about something, I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to talk. I might pick on people if you don't speak, although I have a feeling this is not even such a group. So that's sort of one thing, and the other is we're going to try to sort of stay with time on this in terms of the allocation within the agenda, we're not going to go past six o'clock, but within the sort of way we talk about these topics, we're going to try to be aligned with the time. If you have something that you're concerned about or that a topic comes up in this conversation that seem a little bit off topic, we're not going to shut you down, but we are going to suggest that we put it up on the parking lot, which is behind Hillary and Mary. And the parking lot is just an easy way in a meeting like this to say, that's an important thing to talk about, and maybe we can get back to you with some additional information, but it's not ongoing for today. So we may use the parking lot. Any questions before I open this up to the very first topic? I think we'd like to get a little sense from folks here about kind of what your values are around housing. And maybe use the values ideas that you have as sort of a main, for looking at some of these other topics, so. In no particular order, values around housing, I didn't see you come in, by the way, hi.
That's nice to see.
Values around housing. You know what that means? Anybody need an explanation?
I do.
Housing serves social purposes, it serves economic development purposes, it serves humanitarian purposes. So it's different purposes, and I guess just a question of where you think the emphasis lies? Yes, well.
Well, let me take it, Sabat after an undeserved part of that, which is you know, we have a we already have a critical issue around where is the next generation of younger people that will become the next generation of helping serve the community? My chief deputy and her opposite. Please, chief, her opposite, where is the next generation going to come from? Because people that are going to rise to be those lead of will want to own their own homes. So now, as great as all of our affordable housing that makes, and it is great. But we have to address the need for our next generation of generation with the need is not only just that live here, but to own their own community. And I think if you talk to, as an example, you talk to please, she would say you know, already facing a situation where most of her current life already have a house here, they've had them for years, they've already got, but they're retiring in the next five that they need is and the people that do not have their own. And so how are we going to deal with them? So I think I don't know whether that means exactly what you're talking about for me to
Check off.
It's it depends what I'm considering that.
Thank you, that's good to get off.
Yeah, Judy, I'll hop in, I think that underlying this challenge, these challenges that this community has been facing for well over the fifty years that I've been here is hope. There has to be hope for people to be able to have a future here. Or they're not going to make the sacrifices necessary to stay here. I also just want on it, I would like to say there are different sectors that we need to talk about when we're talking about housing. I think we've done a pretty, pretty good job with very generous public support, addressing the eighty percent and below in this community. I think I think it's just sort of beyond comprehension that somebody can earn two hundred and forty percent or four, over four hundred thousand dollars a year and not find housing here. And that is what we're calling the crucial missing middle. And that, to me, is where this community needs to sort of focus in. Yes, thank you.
Thoughts, can I say one more thing to build on that, is I also think that we have to have that critical downsized component of the people who are retiring so that they can stay on the island and open up their home to say their children and so forth. But not have to leave.
Thank you.
I, I, I think a little bit. Dawn's, Penny and Dawn says is true, the biggest issue that we have now when you see the word values, I jumped right over that, what's a property value? I mean, that's the problem. When you, when you sell a house on Hookah Farm Road for four million dollars, you got a problem. Or big rounds, I mean, you got a problem. That's it, like, there's no, if somebody said that to me five years ago, I would have thought they were nuts. Okay? It's just old property owners selling to get the most money they can get, so how do you interject, intercept all that? That's what all these different initiatives are trying to do. We're just ten years late.
I think the other thing on that note that I've been struggling with recently, watching forums for availability on housing is occupancy limits, right? And occupancy limits and not limiting them or observing them in an appropriate way has allowed the pricing of the marketplace to go out of control. So recently on Facebook, we saw a four-bedroom home advertised at ten thousand dollars a month.
Yep.
And it appeared, based on watching the dialogue, it was rented in three days. And so the only way that I see that happening are there are two wage earners in every bedroom, right? And so that means there's eight adults living in the house and there's eight vehicles at the property, and this is the way to obtain those values. And that's how you drive value to a four-million-dollar price point. And so we need to have a hard conversation about, in our community, about how we, we don't have enough housing units across the board. Right? And so that, do we, do we create a value pyramid of what housing values are? Do we first look to first responders? You know, health and wellness, then education, then underserved, you know, needs workers like you know, DPW sewer, et cetera, employees for the infrastructure of our community, but then how do we look to the coaches, the volunteers, the, the people who are working with kids and are underpaid, like, how do we service that part of the community, which is in the missing middle, but where do we create our priorities on social infrastructure? And how do we support that?
Bingo, that's why this question is here too. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Any other thoughts?
I don't know if it's really long, but I feel like we need to hit the place for the next generation, like, we need to offer people, it's not just a whole ownership, it's like, or it's just not just a house, but having a home, so not like, it's great that we built all these apartments, but like people are going to want a lawn or a yard to let their kids go run around or somewhere to let their dog run around, and it's, they can't I guess we can't just rely on apartments everywhere, I know we have a lot of apartments, but I think we do need to focus it on being a home rather than just a house. Just to thank maybe a little bit later. Yeah.
Right. I, I think, I think, is it a home or is it an investment? You know, I, I think that's the split that we have, is everyone is viewing their home as a lottery ticket now. So how are we going to get people to give their lottery ticket up to someone else who can't pay as much when they can sell it to the next market? We have, we need a bifurcated market, with, you know, so that, so that the year-round and the worker bees and everyone can do that, I think we have to come to grips with density. I, you know, we, we've said that we want a density in this area, yet when we try to do it, everyone gets upset, they don't want it tall and they want a yard. Well, you might not have a yard, but let's have a really nice park down the street. And let's have a really nice place to live, so you don't have to live with three families.
Everybody's needs are different. Everybody's needs are different. Everybody's downsize and just being an apartment.
Some of the things that people are doing now, though, we did then. My family moved in the summer, we lived above the, with no kitchen, above the jennies, you know, in the summer, because that's how we could make a living. And so that's happening now still, so I don't want to be too much too judgmental of people who are living like that, but we need to find a way that you know, so that, that we segregate and we have enough housing for all the needs, and I would say start with the town. The town has to take care of itself, but that's me.
Couple more comments on this. Yes.
So one of the problems of that is we had applications come out for bounce away, so it was like, we downzone, it's, you know, R5 and everything, so we're like, oh, well, upzone, and they were like, no, we don't want to do that, so that's kind of the balance we're having a problem with, is because people are saying, you know, live on the street, we don't want this on our street, but then again, don't take away, to your point, our investment, so that's kind of the fight we're having as a planning board. You know, we want to protect people's rights, but at the same time, we're also trying to listen to people that are going to want to stay and remain on the street.
Well, I just want to make sure, of course, anybody else have something they want to say before Penny jumps in again? Okay.
Just quickly, my friend Matt up and says to me, you know, I have mine, but now you're not going to get to have yours, right? It's like this weird thing I'm talking, thank you, I want to say, you have to look at you have to look at, why are there twenty thousand or more people living here around right now? They're living here because there's economic opportunity. Why is there economic opportunity here? Seasonal nature. Many of the jobs are in service and construction areas, taking care of the eighty percent of the homes that are owned by the people that pay eighty percent of our taxes and don't live there. You know, you have to look at the cause and effect of this. I think.
And the real cost of the solution, the cost of the solution is expensive. It's a half a billion dollars, it's five hundred million dollars to go in and create a bifurcated market to capture ten percent of these houses, because all of these people deserve their equity, nobody moved here thirty years ago and bought a nineteen seventy or eighteen, nineteen eighty-five, three-bedroom, two-bath ranch and expected it to be worth three million dollars when they paid three hundred, but it is, and they deserve that right, and that's theirs, so at some point, we just have to, like, we can't take it away from people, they earned it through the free market economy, and so we're going to have to just belly up and figure out how to pay for it. And that's the hard part, and we capture these deed restrictions, and then a new market gets created from it, is that we've somehow subsidized a way to make it affordable for a year-round person to live.
We're getting into solutions.
Sorry.
That's all right.
But the problem is five, okay, so the problem, where do we find five hundred million dollars?
I just want to make sure, we have a couple of people on and joined us remotely. I think I saw you.
Of course, because our hand up.
I'm sorry, I can't see your hand up, but I understand you have it up, so.
I, I do, hi, sorry I'm late, I'm not really sure what the exercise here, I'm trying to parse it out by listening, because I arrived late, but are we identifying problems?
We're talking about people's values that they bring to the discussion about housing, and
Oh, okay. Yeah. Um, oh, wow, okay, that, I wouldn't have interpreted that from what everybody's been saying. I, I think, I think the important thing is that everybody's, everybody's values are very different, and how we how we address them creatively is probably what needs to happen. I was going to piggyback on whether this is right or wrong for the exercise, I was going to piggyback on what Brian Sullivan said about occupancy and health code, that's been something that's been a concern of mine, is that we have, I believe, turned a blind eye to occupancy and, and enforcing our health code around occupancy because it would create a housing, a worse housing crisis, and I'd love to think about elevating the value of quality of life and living based on health code versus not you know, destroying our economy by forcing, you know, all those people who are living in circumstances that don't comply with health code out on the street, and I don't know how you transition from here to there, but caring for those people in a way that the transition, making that transition, but caring from the way that, that it's not doesn't create a worse crisis, I don't know how that happens.
Thank you. Anything else? Yeah, it's just hard for me to see, so I'm going to have to, have to, you guys help me see if there.
Yeah, so all of what our values were out there, which is dignity, and it's building on what Brooke said. You know, we have a black market in housing, and we shouldn't tolerate that. We should recognize that that kind of environment is not healthy for people and has follow-on effects for children, and when we have dignity as value and we're recognizing that the substandard housing, making it better, it's not for me, someone, it might be difficult in the short term, but it's the right thing in the long term. I'm also hearing a value being expressed that I just want to name, which is that housing prices that have gone up should never come down. I'm kind of hearing that, that like, we should not do anything that might cause someone to feel that a policy or something intentional caused a housing price to deflate. And I think we have to be a little bit more inquisitive about what we've done to inflate housing prices, and what policies we have, or that we have had the market, you know, develop, we've developed through zoning practices, through our commercial practices that have been inflationary to housing. And you know, that, that if we're saying that we implicitly are recognizing that housing is an investment, housing is tax, and that anything we do to take that value away, what you're doing is you're transferring value, you're you're causing a wealth transfer from the unhoused to the people who have housing. Because you are causing everybody, whether they own a house, or you know, they have an expensive house, or they have a non-expensive house, to, you're spreading that around the house of having housed people without having it be shouldered on, on practices that might be inflationary. So that's sort of an abstract concept, but I've thought about it for a long time, because affordable housing is housing that costs less, okay?
All right, I think that this backdrop, sorry, did you want to?
Well, I'll just piggyback on that a little bit. It's not exactly, but it's kind of a, a bit of a segue. And that is that I am really seriously concerned about the survivability of Nantucket if it continues, as it is continuing, as people have so well pointed out for the, for the younger generation. And I think that whatever we do here, a value needs to be that those of us who have chosen to live here, you're rent, which is not an easy thing to do. It's hard, it's hard to get here, it's it's hard to get here in the winter, you, we all know all the things that happen. We know about the, the prices of goods and all of that kind of thing. If we are, if we're doing that, and if we're going to continue to do that, there has to be some advantage placed on doing that, in other words, we've got to get something for doing that, and there has to be some sort of enticement. And it has to come in many areas, but one of those got to be housing.
All right. I just want people thinking about some of these bigger ideas here as we jump into the fairly more specific things. Because I think some folks are talking about sort of humanitarian or social concerns, and others are looking at it, which is fine, you know, from an economic point of view. And if these can collide, or they can actually find some common ground, and we're not going to find that common ground here today, and I'm not going to try that. But I did want to sort of get a sense of where those heads are about what housing means in this community and how the values that you place on, on housing.
Judy, thank you.
Yes. Okay, it's just going to be quick.
It's going to be quick. Park Circle. When Park Circle got built, that wasn't that long ago, two thousand and six. I didn't remember anyone complaining about it. I don't remember anybody saying, this is the worst thing ever. It's too dense. It's this, it's that, if that was going on right now would be another mob. Okay? But that place has existed twenty years. And everybody likes it, and guess what? One of them just sold for over a million. Over a million for a condo. Okay? If you said that ten, five years ago, Muldoon would have believed you, forget about ten years ago. Just having a place to live that's, you know, year-round affordable, which is now two million, okay? I hate to say it, but two is the number now, the new, the new low. It's going to be sold if it was deed restricted, which is what you talked about, I don't know if she understood that, she understood that a lot, but this is a very important issue, this whole deed restriction thing. And giving somebody something to get their house in a deed restriction, their property, whatever it is. And that, I think, going to, okay.
Important, but.
Yeah.
We're going to move on.
Yep.
Um, one of the issues that came up in our briefing to us was around how permitting works, how the whole relationship between planning and housing and health and so forth and so forth, how all that works, or maybe, you know, doesn't quite work as well as some people would like it to, so. We want to talk a little bit about how the permitting process works here, the agenda mentions special permit, and it doesn't have to say special permit. But since your town is probably one of the most special permit-dependent communities I've ever worked in in my thirty-six business field, it's kind of hard to not look at that. But yeah, permitting process here, project comes to the Planning Board. And I'm just, I'd like to get a little sense about how you think the existing process works well or could be improved on. Because part of what we're trying to walk out of here with today is ideas for how to make things better as opposed to solving big problems, which is what could be done that might make something work better. Don, you have your hand up.
The permitting process has become so difficult that you have to pay so many professionals to get anything done, it has eliminated the ability for a private person to just do something for themselves. And that is a major concern, right?
And so why is that?
I can't hand draw a plan and take it down and say, like, this is what I want to do, what do I do now? Like, it's, like, it's and I understand many reasons for it, but it's it's become a different kind of set of values to, my grandparents had a summer home here, my grandfather showed up every weekend and cut the lawn himself. And like, washed, washed his windows and it's secure.
Sounds like me.
I'm guessing or not, because I had a permitting issue this morning of trying to figure something out for someone who is a multimillionaire trying to close out a permit. And I couldn't figure it out, I had to get like, three different people to help.
Was it the building permit, just so we're clear?
Building permit. Building permit, but it has a, has a secondary dwelling permit, and it has, you know, multiple building permits and so forth. There are so many different pieces to it. It's just, like, we have made building costs higher. And I know there are many people who work in that industry, but we've made it more difficult for kind of the little guy.
All right, so let's talk about this a little bit, and I want to, I want to encourage you to think about what could make things better, that's really what the question is. You spoke recently, you. Matt, Matt, go ahead.
No, I'll just do it quick, I just read a book and it talked about exactly what Don was discussing, that if somebody wants to add an apartment to their house and do it themselves, or a cottage, and we know what the cottage looks like, they should be able to go in, and the HCC votes yes on it every time, they should be able to go in on a Monday, on the first thing in the morning, and get their thing approved the next day. It shouldn't be, you know, only the large ones, like, if it's complicated, et cetera, okay, you have to go through all these hoops, but we should find a way that simple, what they suggested would help build the small stuff that would happen all around the island, is to do exactly what Don's saying, which is make it easier. So that someone can get it turned over quickly.
All right.
So I remember my dad, when he wanted to put a dish on the house, he went outside, took a Polaroid, threw a picture and dropped it off the HCC office to have Miss Howard like screaming at him, but I, for thirty-eight years, I've watched it build up, but I have to say But I have to say, in the last eight years. Believe it or not, permitting has gotten easier. I think the plus department has streamlined it, building inspectors coming over the iPad. I know there are certain things you can't find, but. We have E three sixty, we can go on and get your code, so there are things simpler, but can we make it cleaner? I think that that's the process the plus department is doing, so. Right now, I don't have a solution, but I think it's trending in the right direction, is kind of what I want to say.
Yeah, just quickly, for any municipal projects procurement law. We talked about also the seasonal communities task force. It is crucial to figure out a way. To navigate that or do that differently. It adds forty to fifty percent to the cost of municipal building.
Yep.
Yeah.
I I think the the number to to move through any level of project. For an individual, the number of boards and the differences in boards to get a project, you do need to hire multiple professionals.
Right.
So if you want to add a bedroom to your house, you need a new septic system, and so you get the health department, you need the HTC, you need the building department, there are so many numerous. And I don't think that the general public can follow the path anymore. And so the time it takes to hire professional to get onto their schedule. Our whole community is thirty percent understaffed and fifty percent overworked. It doesn't matter whether it's a municipal employee or a private contractor, uh, so it's across the board, so that the extra time is incredibly expensive.
But are there things that are inherent in the permitting process that are driving this?
I think there's a fracture in communication between departments in the overall system, like with like one overarching software system that followed every property together, combined, be great. There's stuff going online that's happening and it's getting better and better to to Joe's point. It's not quite all the way there, but it's it's moving that direction. I think for people to understand in layman terms, some of the steps. What they need to go through to get things done a little bit better. Um, is an important way to. Way to do it, and I don't know what kind of exemptions exist for certain scenarios to Matt's point.
It, I'm. I'm over here.
Yeah, bye. Sorry, Mark.
I'm good.
No, that's okay. I I was advised just to chime in because it's hard to keep track of the digital hands. So a couple of things, I've I've actually, um, as a layperson permitted, um. Construction and renovation of multiple properties on Nantucket for like forty years. And it has gotten harder and harder and, um. Uh, I had an experience at the HTC where I was told by the chair, who's an architect, that I really shouldn't be bringing plans with hatch marks on them. I needed to hire an architect to submit my plans. And I'm a a user of AutoCAD, I made, you know, a a visual error. But the 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 fact that the chair of the HTC told a year-round community member trying to build a house for a year-rounder. That hatching marks meant I that the application was somehow flawed and I should be hiring an architect. Um, my family members couldn't afford to hire an architect. Um, and add that to the cost, so I think that's part of it, but on the solution end of things. Is there a way to uh create a program perhaps like our um covenant lot creation program? Where if someone is doing a year-round deed restricted house, they can take out. A loan or get a grant. And have professionals a a available for them to hire and use. To help them facilitate the permitting process. Uh, as part of the toolbox for year-round deed restricted properties. That could um be an incentive that actually makes life easier. Um, and I love Brian's idea of a a single tracking system where like somehow. Your applications, you knew the status of your applications through all the areas that you had to apply. And I, and my other comment is that as affordability to construct houses becomes more challenging. Um, people are having to do multiple dwellings to to make. Building affordable on their property to make it cost-effective and that adds complexity. So it's just a comment, not a, I don't have a solution for that one.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Is there not a way to make like? People come to the board of health and want a variance for their, have their AI system up so they can have fifty-two bedrooms, but. Is there a way to make this and they come to us first because they need to know how many bedrooms they could have a septic for? I feel like there should be a checklist or like. Brian said like a program where it's like, okay, this is where you go first or like. I work in healthcare. Hospitals hire like a user, a patient experience person that would like walk them through like, oh, well, you have to get your lab work first before you get your CT scan to make sure that your labs are okay, like. So somebody that works for the town, hopefully somebody that works there already to say. Okay, here, this is what I want to do, here's what you need to do first, like, and you work with that person through the process so that it's not hiring. Architects and engineers, like they tell you what you need to do and how you need to do it to. But permanent, I mean, it's not, this isn't like brain surgery.
So what I think I'm carrying so far is it looks like the individual person is wanting to do something. And how complicated are they still? And I think what this question is really about is how the boards communicate. So let's say I'm coming in with a six-lot subdivision. I'm not, I'm not trying to get approval for like one house or an ADU or something, I want to do a development. How's that working for the boards as well? Is that communication during the permitting process working? And what could make it better if it's not working as well as you think it should or should?
Dave has his handle.
Dave. Dave from Amsterdam. You're on mute.
Yes, I'm, I, my comment was before you even. Got to the subdivision part, so.
Yeah.
Um, well, and 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 that was really about. Complex properties have complex permitting, right? If if a local comes in to permit a single-family dwelling on a lot, it's. Uh, it it may be more complex than it should be, but it's pretty straightforward. I I think that um we're we're getting hung up here. I think with ADUs, which now are coming online and we're trying to figure that out, I think that there could be a real opportunity to simplify that sort of application. Whereas there's. Someone, we work with the HTC to come up with five or six accepted designs. That they wouldn't even need to go to the HTC for. If the HTC agrees to these designs, so I think there's ways to simplify. The kind of housing that that we're talking about here that's important and not necessarily these more complex multifan, multi-dwelling properties that. That are complex and I'm not sure that there's an easy way to get away from the permitting. If that makes sense.
Dave, can I just interrupt you on that for a second? I think.
Yeah.
The concern though isn't getting the permit, it's getting it. The all the pieces of the puzzle to build with all the different layers. Of regulation, different people that have to sign up on this and that. I think that's what. They're talking about right now, not getting a permit. To subdivide your land is might be easier than getting an actual building permit to do what you really want, like it depends on what you're asking, okay? But I do want to comment on the six lot, there ain't going to be too many of those, beauty, there's no more land, but that's okay. So I do want to say something of it is actually pertains to this, Don, don't interrupt me yet until I.
You should ring the bell, it's Sarah Bell, Sarah's little bell, I know.
So. When we came, when the real art subdivision was adopted, which was about seven years ago-ish. We should have done thirty years ago, but nobody would have thought of it, okay, we wouldn't have some of these stupid roads that you don't need, all that. But at the beginning. When somebody would do one of these, instead of a buy right situation, we would try to find a way to restrict what they could build. Now we're trying to get them to do a deed restriction on a potential second dwelling. In the past, we would have said, well, we don't want you to have a second dwelling on that lot. That we just helped you create a better situation for your property. Now we're going the other way. Because of why we're here, I mean, that's why, I mean, no one seven years ago was talking about deed restrictions. No, it was never even a a thought. So I'm just telling you. That with this housing component of a year-round ownership is like always now coming up in our meetings now. But it's too bad we didn't think of it ten years ago.
I wish I'm tall online as well. Okay. Oh, Shanta.
Did she answer? Yes, I did, thank you. Um, I just wanted to touch on the, just the simplification of the permitting process and communication across departments. And just mention that, um, uh, I guess it's, um, it'll be dependent on how this budget season goes, but. Um, from speaking as a a a town employee, if you will. Uh, we do have a sort of a solution that we're putting forward through OpenGov that offers a permitting platform that, um, with. Community support will be transitioning permitting, most of the permitting that you go in and apply for throughout the town to that platform. Uh, what's fantastic about that is that, um, as you submit, let's say you submit a proposal, if you will. For um for something, I'll use events because that's what I do. You submit a proposal for events, it involves five different departments. All five of those departments, it will send out a message to the person that that is assigned to. And then they tackle their portion. The applicant can always go back into the platform and track exactly where they are in the process, so they'll know if. Let's say Billy needs to, um, you know, get the sign approved. That will be hung, you know, that sort of thing, if Erica has posted the street blocking permit. All of those things, so there there is, we're working on it. But it requires support from the community and hopefully if it makes it through the budget process on the town meeting floor, if this gets called and discussion ensues. That you all will come out and support it. Uh, because we are, we recognize that it could be a little bit more seamless and we are actively working on it in the background as well.
I'm glad this all was.
So, no, I, and I know that that's common. Yes.
Yeah, so I. I find that the biggest slowdown in any of the projects I've done around the state. Is an architectural review, it's the one that is not governed by anyone, it's, um. Interpreted by who's ever on the board, but. If you go to the building department, they have to act within certain so many days to get a permit. The building inspector is going to show up in so many days and electrical inspector, so that's kind of built in, but I think the delay. Comes in that board for you, but I get also how you're saying getting a survey involved and stuff like that, and that's kind of a. Uh, huge delay in getting some permitting, but at the same time, I think that's the biggest one. And at the same time, being on being on the CONCOM, being on other, if I see an application come in. Then I say, well, this is going to problematic for the CONCOM and trying to uh let the applicant know, so. And that's where like we just sent a letter to the building inspector, there was a deck that was built in setback or signed in setback. So we made sure that they were made aware of that, wrote an email from the staff, so I think there's some things that we're trying to do. I think these meetings are great, I think the planning board and PDC, planning board members, select board members, we've been having these meetings, I think this is really important. You know, next time, bring in the CONCOM, I have a meeting with the CONCOM, HTC. Planning and building, and I think there's some ways we could streamline some things, but I think every day we're making it better.
So I'm going to take Hillary's comment, and now I actually want to. Take this to a slightly different level, but go ahead.
Okay, I just had some specific comments about the HTC, um, agreeing with what Joe said. Um, I think, uh, there's been a re, a recommendation to hire an HTC administrator that was provided in the consultant reports from the National Situation Preservation Commissioners and stuff like that. Um, and I don't know why we're not doing that, um, one of the slowdowns is applications go before the HTC and they're not ready. To be before the HTC slows everything down and it's not good for anybody, it raises a lot of costs. And the other thing I'd like to see us do is, um, commit to a professional, um, consultant-driven. Process to update the design guidelines, including moving through a site review. Um, where for exactly the reasons that a lot of people mentioned, it's things that you know you can build. Um, so I think there's a lot of ways, specific ways we can do what other communities do to produce this process.
Thank you. Let me just say why this comes up. Um, and this is very helpful to hear, but. When we were preparing this meeting, some specific concerns came up. Um, and and it was around things like. Planning board's got a special permit in front of them or something and they make a decision. Um, that may have implications for other boards and departments. That don't know what's coming after because they may not have been involved in the permit consultation process. Or they made comments and they don't know what happened to them. And I think that's really why this is on here is it has less to do with what happens at the building and building inspector's desk. Than it does how boards communicate and how board input is addressed. Does that help at all? Because I think that's maybe something that. It would be helpful to know. How that's working for all of you and are there things you can think of that might make it better?
I I I think it's, I I think a lot of the applicants are shopping for the lenient parent. They want to go to the first, they want to go somewhere where they're going to get yes, so then they can bring it to the other boards to get yes. You know, that's what we experienced as a select board and then we're stuck with things that we would never have approved if we had known about it. Like thirty-five parking spaces on Wake Drive when there's nowhere to park. So I I think that that, I think that's part of what's happening.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, a perfect select board example is that. People get to the point where they've literally like renovated a hotel or renovated a restaurant. And they expect that they have a liquor license. But they haven't asked us yet and there wasn't one there before. Or a curb cut.
Or a film.
Or a pullout for Uber drop off. Very often, and we've said this, so it's getting better, but very often we are backed into, we've already done all this, why can't we have it?
So how do we get notice earlier like to the appropriate boards, right? What's, so if it's a special permit at the planning board and it has a future potential of affecting somebody.
Yeah.
What's the notification process to the other person that it affects? Is it the health department because they need septic systems? Is it for housing trust because you want deed restrictions on it?
It needs to be flagged.
Yeah, how do we, how do we create a checklist of flagging and then notification? And it sounds like Shanta's talk, we're going to start to do that.
Yeah, just quickly, it's important that people understand a lot of these activities can occur concurrently.
Yeah.
It's not like this has to be done and then you move to that and there needs to be some sort of guidance with an overview. To that.
To the permit.
And I think we do need to provide some of that rather than saying you like. You have to hire this person, you have to hire that person, especially when we're talking, bringing it back to like affordable housing. If you're doing, trying to do something that is going to be restricted. Or is going to be a really.
This is a big issue on the planning board because people would say, okay, I'll be restricted and we don't, you know, we say, okay, yeah, you do restrict it, but we don't know if it actually gets, you know, if it's all mitigating.
Well, and not to mention that every time you restrict another property, you create a monitoring. Um, competition responsibility as well, yeah, you know, for prescriptions on, I'll get to him, so. You don't put restrictions on property for public benefit and not monitor it, there's another whole work held in here, yes, sir.
Can I tell you a little story?
If you, in a, in a break one, yes, you may.
I'll go with border health. And rules. Okay? Before someone comes to the border health, they have to clear. The health department. So this little story is. This man comes to the border health. And he says to us. I want to move. My subject system. So we talked to him this, we says, well, why do you want to move your subject system? You can do everything you need to do. On the layer that you have. So we talked about it and he says. Well, I said. Why can't you do that? I said, you can put this here, you put the septic system there, he said, oh. I can't put the septic system there. I said, why not? He says, that's where my garage is going. I said, oh, put your garage over here. He said, oh, I don't want to do that. I said, but you can put the garage there and put the septic system there. He said, no, I can do that, said. You're not getting. Today. Septic system's going over there, my garage is going over there, you're not getting it. And that's all we did, he didn't do it, he could do what he did. And that's all we did. He didn't do it. He could do what he did. The way you sort of could do it, and that was the end. So if you go by the rules, it's easy. And that's what we do. We go by the rules. If the only reason he should have come to us, if he couldn't do that, then we would have tried to work something out with the guy. But when he come to us, we have rules and that's what we do. And it makes the, everything simple.
Yes, John.
If it's the appropriate moment, you know, the major heading here was um, coordinate council. So um, I'm relatively new to the planning board. But I'd like to take a step back from alternative thing and just tell you a, a valuable piece of information that my friend Nat gave to me, he like, we want and it was, which was, John, we don't have any dirt left, right? We don't have any dirt left. And then he took me through what that really meant. And in fact is, we have very little land that's available that can be permitted, whatever that process is. So if this, this is the right moment, I, I think it would be worth at some point, even if it goes to the parking lot, is that we, we have a lot of conservation land and we had to lead to great conservation, you know, organizations. We have not much town land. We have some state land. And at some point, I think we have to talk about, well, should we create more dirt? And if so, what is it going to say? Between the town, the state and the conservation organizations, do that, put it in the right place.
That's a parking lot issue.
Yeah, that's, well, over.
Yeah, sorry. Another time.
Are, are we talking about like building the safe for it and creating?
We're gonna stick on topic here because.
Is there not a way to make the permitting process for affordable or attainable housing more streamlined than it is not?
Well, your zoning could be clear.
Yeah.
I mean, sorry, but that's usually how, I mean, you know, most towns that have zoning for affordable housing have thresholds, abuse. You hit those things, you have to provide affordable houses. And that's it.
Other thing that was being talked about earlier is incentives, right? Uh, for the seasonal communities act, we're allowed to give um, owners who participate in affordable housing.
Yeah.
On a permanent basis, up to a fifty percent rate on their taxes.
Yeah, uh, that's also a parking lot issue. Good, thank you. If nobody has.
Good, parking lot issues, so we have new.
Julia, something kind of simple, kind of micro that, that I, that I think, I think like this meeting is helpful because it's helps us get all on the same page. And one thing I've been thinking about going this in, into this meeting is so we have a town meeting or special town meeting once or twice a year, right? And sometimes there's a warrant article that falls under the heading of housing. And it might be an affordable housing trust article or something that, that, that the trust is working on, or it might be cottage communities that planning board was sponsored and to the public, to, to folks who don't follow all these meetings, it's the town, right? And I think that if we were to have a meet, something as simple as starting having, having this meeting once or twice a year to talk about what's on the warrant.
Yes.
And, you know, maybe we don't need to vote on it to support, but, but so that we're all on the same page and, and speaking from the same hymnal, if you will, singing, um, it's so, so that we can answer questions. When on town meeting floor, people's like, okay, it's the planning board, but we have the board housing trust and the town and it, it just doesn't make sense to people, unfortunately.
I'll tell you, um, before we move on to this next item, a town to look at that does that very thing is the town of Lincoln's. Um, and every fall, late fall, they have a state of the town meeting. And stuff that is going to come up at town meeting in the spring, that is sort of, everybody knows it's gonna be an issue. They spend a day, um, you know, with small group, large group discussions about these things. So at least town officials and staff going to town meeting are far or far, or should be relatively conversant uh, in what's going on. And so I would just tell you, there is at least one town I know of that has done this for years um, and does it quite well. We are gonna move on to affordable housing need and policy do it. So to stick with the description of this, if where do you think the town's emphasis on affordable housing is today? And where do you think it should be? So this started a little bit earlier. We're gonna pick that back up, isn't it? Um, there are so many needs here, it's kind of hard to, a little bit dizzying, but let's just be clear, first of all, like where the emphasis is now and then maybe talk about where it needs to be.
I was gonna say, I think we were, were heavily prioritizing meeting our shy numbers to block forty Bs, which there is not a whole lot of places one could even be proposed anymore. Um, and I think we need to move our emphasis more strongly towards workforce. Mid, middle income to even.
So let's just be clear. The, the fact that something ends up on the subsidized housing inventory doesn't necessarily mean it's affordable.
Correct.
So I, I just have to kind of play that out too. There is a lot of mythology about what affordable is and is not. Um, and you know, this is my, this is my. But you have people here who are like at thirty percent AMI. And so the fact that something's SA, I've been lost out following on Saffron himself. The fact that something is SA, SHI eligible does not mean it's affordable housing. Anyway. I agree with you, there's a lot of emphasis on.
And, and ownership opportunities.
That that's where it should be or that's where it is.
No, I think we need to get more focus onto workforce and some because no one can afford a house, even if they're working three jobs.
Okay, others, now.
I, I feel differently, this one, so speaking, uh, I think the town has to take care of its own employees first. Or we aren't gonna have people to, uh, you know, we won't have town employees. If we, if we try to solve all the other people's problems, the town is gonna, you know, implode. So the town, I think the town's focus and, and I think there's limited dollars that the public is willing to spend over the next few years. I've had a lot of people telling me that their taxes went up and they didn't think that they could because we had a low tax rate and eighty percent paid by our Highlanders. And I've been warning them what was gonna happen. I've had a lot of people come and tell me, geez, Matt, you were right. My neighborhood's more valuable now and my taxes went up quite a bit. And they're, they are getting, they are hesitating on supporting as much housing as, as we're doing now. And so I think that the town needs to really think about how are we gonna operate the town and take care of that first.
But that's what I'm talking about. People don't qualify, most of the people who work for the town don't qualify for eighty and below.
Then, then if you're taking the town, I'm with you. If you're talking about everybody's business.
That, that's more of a strictly select word policy discussion, I think, but.
Well, it's.
Okay. Alright, so I'll get, yes, you first.
Oh, yeah, um, uh, I would agree with what, uh, Matt and, and Dawn said about, about the missing middle. I am a habitat recipient. And I'll, I'll be the first to admit that most people wouldn't qualify for habitat for Xanity or Housing Nantucket homes or apartments. And so I think there are nonprofits who are focusing on that sector. And then, and then the town and the affordable housing trust should focus on, like we say, the missing middle, which is a huge you know, it's a huge swath of, of, of the islands population that just never afford to own a house but would never, ever qualify for, you know, have that man here, housing that target or, or housing authority or the other entities that kind of care about that. Oh, oh, yeah, there's a wide, there's a wide range, but, but, but I mean, I have, I have a ton of friends who just would never qualify to become pie, pie, pie and they're, you know, they're just totally discouraged. They're like, you know, I mean, I don't know, it's too much money. And or I only have one child rather than.
Others, I just feel like I've been talking so much, but I just want to point out the Nantucket land trust model is that the trust owns the land and the owner and in our organizing um, documents, it expressly states to provide housing, prioritizing municipal employees.
Brian, you're still patient over there.
Yeah, so the housing problem has been around for fifty years on Nantucket and it's the, the same level of problem as it was before, but to the point that John has made, we now have a land problem and a housing problem. So a handful of years ago, Nantucket does an incredible job of restricting development through other tools. Is it septic sewer access, forty B through affordable housing and maintaining the shy list? So this is, I think, the funding push seven years ago really came out of a place of slowing down a four, uh, uh, forty B development. So Christie's office has done an incredible job of increasing the shy numbers, maintaining the list and are going to get us to the ten percent in a projected three years, right? So we have a solution for that.
Yeah.
The question becomes what part of the next need is the community going to shift to and be willing to continue to fund? Right? Because that's the problem. And the burden on the taxpayer is a real problem, right? We've got, everybody's got to replace a roof because insurance is ridiculous. You've got rising assessments in every neighborhood on the island. And so people's taxes are going up. And so how much longer is the taxpayer going to be willing to burden that cost for solutions around the community for subsidy? And, and what are those gonna be? So then we shift to where is the need? We've all just like defined the missing middle. How do we create housing opportunities for missing middle? We do it with seniors. How do seniors want to move out of their houses? There's nowhere for them to go. Let's give them and create a place for seniors to go, so then we can capture their homes and then offer them to other families through deed restrictions. So we need a short-term senior solution so people can downsize out of these complicated houses that have yards and roofs and things that they don't want to deal with and maintain. So where do we look for those kind of solutions? To create opportunities, where, what properties have ADU uh, like ability to get built? And who would be willing to supply that with a financial incentive to the community for deed restriction? But then I, I think the need to address housing on Nantucket, which existed and still exists for fifty years, was only addressed because we wanted to curb forty B development. That was, that was the real reason from my perspective, why the vote happened. And then we have done a successful job of that. And what will the next shift allow in the community for it to go? Do we want to solve missing middle housing? The, the, the work at the state, the seasonal communities designation, what's come out of that is tremendous. Um, the fact that we're gonna be able to focus these dollars on municipal employees and municipal housing is the biggest one of all time for a community like this, but.
And it's also going to be very challenging to.
Yeah.
From a policy standpoint.
Yeah, that is, yeah. And thirty B, inexpensive.
Yeah, um, I think, I think, um, there is a um, I hear a lot, sort of a resistance to helping other people financially with taxpayer dollars. Um, and there's, I think generally we hear that from the people who have had access to the housing market themselves, who are housing secure, own their property. So there's a there's a values-based conversation or a what do we want Nantucket to look like as a community conversation that needs to drive um, to underpin motivation to continue investment in year-round housing at all levels. Because if we don't agree that we value a healthy year-round community where people can um, take root and grow a family and move up and down the property ladder over a lifetime in the way we used to be able to do thirty, forty years ago, when there was dirt available and you could cobble together permits to build a house with your friends in the trades. But the building codes have gotten too complicated. Um, it's, it's to Brian's point, there has to be a motivation in the community. We have to build motivation among the people who are gonna pay for this to do it. And I think that is a transition we have to make and it's an important one. And I think the other piece of this puzzle is really understanding, and I think what, what fuels that narrative or encourages that motivation is really evaluating who doesn't have housing that is part of the community and really understanding that at a granular level through research um, into who needs housing and who might need, what might I need in five years? And so to much do more data analytics around the need, because the need drives the narrative, understanding the need drives the narrative that creates the motivation to solve, it defines the problem more clearly and creates the motivation to solve it. Which ultimately we need the votes at town meeting to do that unless of course we get a transfer fee and you know, then, then we have a few more options, but for now, that's it. We have to go to, we need the voters to support this financially. And if it is municipal employees first that creates that market of housing that takes pressure off the, the rest of the market, you know, we just need to understand it more holistically. Um, but ultimately it is about a narrative and it's about driving um, a community getting the community to support it in the way they did when it was, as Brian said, trying to prevent forty Bs.
Yeah, I was just, what, I'm wondering, um, does everybody, does the community as a whole actually know what municipal who all are municipal employee? Like I think that, um, if they knew, police officer is, teachers, um, ambulance, um, and not just people in the town building, of course, they're doing uh, important job. And if they, if they really thought about everybody that needs housing and how um, it comes back to benefit them, I think, um, people would be more on board. Or there's a lot of people that are on board, but some aren't. And I'm just thinking that, does everybody know what who is municipal employee is? So.
And I'd add to that, and we all agree what we mean by, you know, explain for it. Do we mean a subset of everyone, you know, that is a little hard to talk about, but, um, yeah, you know, you know, so do we, you know, Brian, I'm looking at you because like the messaging in this is gonna be is harder than the messaging we had way back when, right? In terms of it's for municipal, municipal employees. Do you think there's any um, need to be a little more um, definitive on what we mean by municipal?
For what to whom? One of, for, for this whole. I think higher community supports municipal housing and I think in general, people have a grasp on, on what and who a municipal employee is. You know, is it a key essential, you know, DPW worker who's clearing a fallen tree in the middle of the winter so the snowplow can go so the you know, ambulance can show up to somebody's house when they're having a heart attack. I think everybody wants all of those people housed in safe, secure, not overcrowded housing situations that they can come home and feel good about and want to raise a family or be single and live in it by themselves.
Is the town still the largest employer?
Yes.
Um, I could say that from, you know, through my family, I have two uh, I have a niece and her husband works in the town and she works at the school. And the moment they got the town housing, they, the stress off my brother, like everything that was like and now she's having two kids and it's like, it's all positive. So I know that word's getting out and so more and more people are like hoping that this is coming. So I think teachers and police and fire, I think they all want this. Um, and I think it's gonna be really positive for them.
But I think, John, the bigger story and the harder problem is what are we gonna create? Like, how do we find those options that are ten thousand dollars a month year-round rent on Hooper Farm Road for a four-bedroom? How, like, are we not going to build apartments for the single people who want to live alone and not raise a family or, you know, have passed that point in life and are empty nesters? Like, what are we going to create for them and where are we gonna create it?
Yeah.
Or who are we going to support in the community to develop it and then grab these restrictions? And what is that?
That was really Brian, like, the, the reason I mentioned that, uh, was that because some this has gotta go somewhere and right now we, somewhere isn't really.
Yeah, I, I think.
Yeah, I, I think one place we could start on the, we all, right? On the where do you think it should be? One of the most successful programs, anything to do with housing on Nantucket of all time is the covenant program. And it's twenty five years old and it's largely broken, unfortunately. And there's been some talk about reforming it and I'm not, I'm not wagging any fingers or saying that this is past due or whatever. Um, and I know it's really Housing Authority and Housing Nantucket kind of, it was their thing back in the day. But I think that reforming the covenant program to bring it up to twenty twenty five standards. And, you know, somebody bought a house at nine something and now it's capped at seven. They're underwater and they, their insurance went through the, like, it just doesn't work anymore.
Yeah.
So if we can come up with that and make it flexible for islanders to solve their own issues uh, in, in, in some ways. Um, I think that would, that could be a good place to start for something that we already have.
We worked on, I'll take your comment. Few years back, we were working with one of the really super affluent suburbs west of Boston, um, very similar. They obviously have neighbors in the north. But this idea that people don't really understand like what municipal employees make, whether incomes are down to restaurant workers, you know, and so we did this program, um, kind of featuring the different types of jobs that bring a community and what their median wage was. And then what they actually could afford. And it, and it actually was a very effective program because people simply had no idea. You'd think that they did because they go to town meeting and they vote on town's department budgets. And you'd think everybody knows what the department, uh, heads, what staff are making. You can think people might have some idea of what a restaurant worker makes, but they actually don't. You might, because you're smart, you're involved in town government. You may know what people do. Just maybe thinking about how information gets communicated out. And I know you all try, this is not a criticism of any of you. But sometimes just maybe taking a slightly different tack and saying, like, one of the most effective ones was this picture of a guy who was working in a restaurant, he was a waiter. And, um, and the tagline for the picture was, um, you know, I, I wait on your table when you come to my restaurant, cannot be your neighbor. Or I invite you to my table to, can I be your neighbor? And that was the tagline, well, but can I be your neighbor? And it really got opened up a conversation with people who never thought about the restaurant worker who they see every week perhaps being their neighbor. So thinking about, was why I wanted to start with values on this. It's like, if there's a humanitarian impulse in housing, it kind of leads you to think about the, the discussion of housing in a different way than perhaps if it's an economic development question or a municipal survival question. It helps you to think for different ways to reach different audiences. That was the basis for that first question in my book.
I think with all of this too, like putting more faces or jobs with people, so like, I know somebody that works with me at the school that lives at Wiggles Way now. And is like, super excited that they have housing that is, their family can live there and they can afford and it's year round. And they're like stable and I feel like we need to do, like, I know that there's things that come out, how the Nantucket puts out a newsletter, but there's no like one streamlined message of like, this is where our municipal, like, we housed these input, these municipal employees. Or we housed six teachers or like, I think that that message is really important to people to be like, where is my, let's say, six point five million dollars that are, we're taking, is coming out of taxes, like, where is that? Is we housed, you know, and I think you guys said, like, it comes out like we housed people, but like, putting more faces with names. Or putting more faces with the, with the housing, I think would really, people would be like, oh, well, let me hear more about, or a lot of people don't know about the covenant program.
Yeah. I'll take two more comments and then we're going to move to the next hour.
Yeah, I think Wiggles Way is fantastic, um, and I think it is a flat development. Yes, I write about that. So, um, when I look at Wiggles Way, I like, really like all the buffering, I like the density with the buffering, um. I do wonder, like, could it be three stories? I mean, we have all these areas, it's just two and a half stories and then we want to take land bank and unlock it. So I think we need to figure out how to build taller buildings, um, that we like. And we have some models that we could look at, there are three story buildings on Nantucket. And if you go in the way back, there were more, so I, I'd like to see that happen. Um, I think, uh, we could, um, proactively rezone some areas for, uh, I mean, look, we're not an NBATA community, but thank your lucky stars. And I know it's been a, a real weight hitter for you, Judy, but, um, and, and there's been criticism of that program, but it did motivate people to rezone for multifamily. So, you know, I think we had, like, I live in a seventeen forty eight house with eighteen seventy eight edition. Um, it was a duplex. When it was built, it was two families living in one, that one house. And so there are ways to maybe unlock some density in ways that people wouldn't even notice. So these, these are all planning tools. So I'd like to see us get really, um, creative about how we can build awesome Nantucket style communities with more density in the right places by proactively envisioning them and enticing people to support that.
So to your point, that is one way the communities make dirt. Zoning makes dirt, you know, or it takes dirt away.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the Pudding Board has done a number of successful, like, articles over the last five years that have done this, right? Two covenants on a larger sized lot. There is an opportunity for variances for taller buildings with the right percentage of affordable housing in the CMI. So there, there are opportunities that have been created, but again, going back to how complicated our zoning code is and the communication of getting that out there is where a lot of this struggles. I do want to just, um, communication and your point and prepare everybody in the room. There's an excellent movie out right now that, um, some kids did, uh, or some filmmakers made called Room for Us. It's being circulated around the community. It went out today to two hundred and fifty two non-responsible taxpayers in that room. It also went out today through to the Interfaith Council for all of them to watch and view. So I'm sure all of us in our individual capacity and role will be getting feedback. Uh, but one of the questions from the email I got earlier today was, tell us how we can help and what we can do.
Yeah.
So when we come up, when we get to solutions, Paige.
Thank you. I need to move back, we got to move on, we just got to. It's open house. So opportunities for year round housing, we need to get to this because there's still one more question at the end. So opportunities for year round housing. I will, thank you for that. I will, Nantucket, define, uh, inventory and utilize year round housing opportunities. Thoughts?
I'll jump in. So I need to walk around the snacks and tell them. The, um, the, the community has, um, allocated a hundred eighty four million. A hundred and fifty million, I said. And we've deployed how much of that? And, and since twenty nineteen, when this community started um, having the will to, to fund affordable housing initiatives. The Affordable Housing Trust has spent, um, money creating four hundred, over four hundred units that are permanently affordable and deed restricted. We don't do the best job of explaining that to people. But, um, and again, the focus on this was largely staying, you know, in, in St. Harbor. Um, now I forgot the question, I'm saying I'm having a little.
How do we find?
Yeah, I just want to say, we, you were talking before about, Brian was talking about people downsizing, perhaps a senior doesn't want the maintenance any longer. This, we just did an RFP, um, for how many units total is it?
Fifty nine.
Fifty nine, fifty nine units in three different locations. The one over on Esper Lane is largely, um, smaller one bedroom units with a lot of open space around it geared towards people that are older. So we, we are constantly, we, the trust is constantly, um, trying to think, we're planning two, three years down the line here. And we've leveraged our funding to, we've got the six and a half million from the CPC that we were able to fund and so we have, we have plans, that's not going to be enough. And I just think, as Mary had said earlier, we have to focus very much now on opportunities for ownership where people can grow. And.
So what price points are you aiming for in the?
In, in the RFP?
In a RFP, it's mainly workforce. There's one life tech deal, so it'll be sixty and eighty percent AMI and the rest will be eighty to one twenty.
Yeah, okay.
And then, then the Nantucket Land Trust, it's, it's going to be up to two hundred and forty seven, somebody earning four hundred thousand dollars.
Other thoughts?
Just, I just want to go back to what Tom talked about with the covenant. But he just stole my whole speech there, but I mean, talk to him. He's right on the money, like, this is, the covenant program is so good, we got to fix it. So you've got a house, I mean, you want to build a covenant house. There's no like deal for a house. There's a deal for the land and.
Relent.
Well, we'll talk about that in a minute. But somebody selling a covenant lot, Judy, needs to get incentivized with, we need to talk about ground cover bonuses and put that up here for a full, for year round deed restricted properties and covenant property, you need a ground cover bonus. Well, that can get put up on the parking lot for sure. And the other thing is, okay, so let's say you try to do a third, a, a second covenant. And you, and you add a ground cover, like, tho- those things happens, okay? And there's no tool for that, okay? So we have to incentivize that, and with the land trust being able to take care of the dirt pile because the owner of the land is not getting enough money. It's not a subdivision, it's just slicing off a little piece of pizza and saying, here's your house block. Yeah, but it's not worth enough for somebody to do it. They're kind of giving their land away in theory. So we got to fix that with, whether it's the land trust or whether it's probably doing a Christie's programs. I, I don't know, but the covenant is a great program because they get a house. And in a lot of cases, it's a fairly decent lot, depending upon what the zoning is. We have to fix that, like, we shouldn't be abandoning the covenant, we should be fixing it. So, and the height thing, Joe and I were talking with a couple HTC members last year and eight before about this. I'm kind of surprised to hear positive stuff about going over thirty feet. Well, I'm going to remember those comments, I can tell you that, like, I'm telling them, I'm going to remember them. Because that is a third rail issue to talk about going over thirty feet, I can tell you that. So that one's in the toolbox, Joe, it is, thank you.
Just to be clear, I don't think it was going over thirty feet, no matter what, I think it was going.
I know, but certain things, I get that, I'm just saying, that is a third rail issue, dirty, thirty feet.
I understand.
I think there's a big opportunity in like the large, more rural zoning districts to give ground cover bonuses in like LUG two and LUG three. Lower the height. Make the buildings la- bigger inputs and utilize a lower level. And I think that that could solve a lot of problems and stay within keeping of, um, you know, fitting in with like the HTC character.
And that was someone we talked about in calls. Thank you.
Yeah, but maybe you get some.
Yeah.
Keep them low.
Some incentives to to include an apartment that's restricted, even to year round occupancy.
Yeah, two things, I think, yes, in, but, but not necessarily everywhere. We have town and country for a reason. The country, the town area should be dense, we should be dense from North Liberty Street out to the airport. And we should be having an urban grid and we should be having height there. And we don't necessarily want to be putting a lot more into the areas that are car dependent, et cetera. So however we do it, we have to take those into consideration, we have to follow good planning principles. The covenant, we knew the covenant when we formed it, was going to have an issue when interest rates increased and they just didn't. They stayed at a low amount for twenty years and we walked out.
Yeah.
And now they haven't. And so, but we knew that and what we were trying to do then was we were trying to let people share in the, in the value. Because, oh man, they have the, you know, Nantucket's increasing, everyone has to have a feast of it, it wouldn't be fair if they didn't. Well, I think we actually were kind of at the point where, you know, if we have really good rental homes that people, the town employees and other employees live in, and they have great places for their kids, et cetera. And they can save a lot of money for their retirement in a little place here or somewhere else. I think, you ask the young people, a lot of them would love that. You know, that's way better than what they're dealing with. So we, we all are kind of ha- pretty ha- lucky here, we're all owners mostly. But I think everybody, the people who aren't, you know, have different values and we can't, we shouldn't say that we can't, that we shouldn't be saying we have to do homeownership, it has to be homeownership. We should be saying, let's do really good rentals that any of us would want to live in. And make it a really good rental, or we, like, in Aspen, Colorado, a fireman have a beautiful place that's this modernistic, unbelievable building that the fireman live in. And I'm like, imagine that, like, it's, it's so nice.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to get that.
Yep.
Well, then I just want to say, uh, one of the things I, I've always been a little bit, I don't want to say amused by, but interested. When I hear people in Nantucket talk about like other communities are done, Aspen, Bay, whatever, when you actually act, work in those places or you are debuts with them in various ways, you find out it's not the rosy picture that you may think of. And that, um, I'll just leave it at that. It's, some of these models, they're lovely, but all, everybody's trying to solve a problem. So I'm not knocking what any other community is doing. But I think you got to know, there's a lot more of the story than I think you may realize. Um, is Dave out there, is that what she said? Dave? You're on mute here.
Ah, I'm, I'm, I'm on my iPad, I'm trying to figure this whole Zoom on iPad thing out. Um, so I, I think a lot of people have mentioned a, a lot of things. I know at planning, you know, with Meg's leadership, we've worked hard on the cottage community. And, and I really think that that has a, a really good place for us. Um, you know, we've been a, a little pushed back with the, with the new ADU laws. But I really think that that could be a very important tool for both rental and ownership in the future. And, and that definitely could have a home in, in the bigger lugs. I think that when we talk about other changes, we really need to get the community behind us because it will take zoning changes, ground cover changes, duplex. Whatever we do is going to involve zoning changes. And without the public support, the community support, none of this is going to work. And I think that unfortunately, housing's gotten a bad name. And I think that we really need to work on, I mean, we have a fair amount of community support, but to get a zoning, something passed in zoning for, for extra ground cover for the cottage community, we are really going to need the community behind us and supporting us. Thanks.
Well, that's the thing. Can I just go back to Board of Health for a second? Maybe there's a restriction if you get an extra bedroom on an innovative alternative system. You can only get that if you're restricting it to your, like, that extra bedroom. Is there any way to tie that together? Well, because they don't have to grant that variance.
No, I know, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not Board of Health expert, I just.
Your work, you know, our overall concern has to do with if we poison the well, we don't got to live or anyone, you don't got to worry about. Single source aquifer quality, that's the main thing. We're not a big fan of the bonus for an eight bedroom house to go to twelve bedroom. You know, if not cert- if not seasonal, that's not year round housing. That is a vacation house. So part of it is, you know, we're concerned about as development grows and we have to meet the need of the, the year round residents, that we also have to make, make sure of the water quality, that we only have one pot, one pump. So, you know, we are very concerned, that's a lot of our discussion lately. It's been around, um, looking at the different districts we have, what restrictions are in them? Try to protect whether it has to do with nitrogen and these thing that, or looking at the other capital and everything that goes into the water. So that is, you know, something that we're concerned about. But one little side, uh, it wasn't here, it's in the Hudson Valley. Uh, I worked it out with a housing thing there, but, and it wouldn't work because maybe Hudson Valley is so different. But we took stuff off the tax rolls and we were able to create housing once, you know, the tax roll, you'll kind of claiming that nonprofit that would claim the housing and then, you know, rebuild that. I don't know enough about Nantucket's tax roll.
We, we don't need to be taking any more off the tax rolls around here.
Well, I know, because they can house, yeah, yeah, stuff like houses that are behind taxes and, and, you know, you're putting them and doing that.
Okay.
Oh.
And the other issue, um, that, you know, and this, you know, the, the idea of having. And the other issue, um, that, you know, and this, you know, the idea of having a navigator was just like permitting. And they had that, that's, that, that full box of common plans that are already through for ADUs. And for standard one family houses, you know, that was again, something we, we were able to work with. But the water is really important.
And in a variety of jurisdictions now across the country of having some, certain free group plans. Um, if you're trying to cut costs back, it's one of the things that. Yes.
Um, to come to Matt's point about density and location, and talking about the town and the airport corridor. I just wanna put out there that as a housing advocate, I am incredibly against workforce housing on commercial properties. We are very quickly going to bite our nose to spider face in this community by creating too much workforce housing. Without requiring commercial use on the properties. Because there are no places for small businesses to create or exist any longer if we allow them to be just housing development. So that, that's one major concern, and I wanna think about that as we're going. So that is the antithesis of the question, where are we gonna create year round housing? The, the most successful organization on Nantucket, which created hyperinflation for housing, is Conservation. And Conservation has done an incredible job of picking out their target properties over a forty year span. And working with those owners in a long cycle to acquire those properties. So we need to create these similar ones. And what does that look like? And we're about to move into this ten year wealth transfer zone of everybody who got to Nantucket between eighty five and two thousand and bought cheap. And now is going to retire, sell their business, sell their house and move on. How do we communicate to that group of people now regularly and consistently to get the restrictions and either buy their home? And resell it with a restriction, or buy the restriction and keep them in their home? And communicate with them on a regular and ongoing basis about what their opportunities are. Is it with an ADU? Is it with the covenant? Is it with the restriction? And so let's take the tax database, go through it, find all of the people that bought homes in that time period. Everybody's getting a year round exemption and communicate with them on a regular and consistent basis and educate them.
Thank you. Brooke, our, the problem is I can't see the handbrake because the, the lighting here just messed it up, but I know you wanted to see.
No, no worries. I was happy to chime in, uh, before we moved on. Um. So I've been thinking about this a lot, and I think that, I mean, I have encountered some folks who are developers. Who are interested in taking properties either that they already own, or they're interested in acquiring. And they're very interested in participating in year round housing. And so I think that we need to have a playbook, a workbook, uh, uh, you know, a place where they can go. And these are folks who are experienced, right? And they don't know what's available in terms of incentives or tools in the toolbox because it's evolving so fast. So I think it's really important that we create an update on a regular basis. A place for people to go, whether that's, you know, a dig- you know, a digital library. Where someone who, and whether that's an individual homeowner, or someone who wants to develop multiple units on a piece of property. Can go and sort of go through a decision tree of thi- this is who I am, and it takes them down different paths, like some kind of, um, tool. I don't know whether it's analog or digital, right? But that has, uh, available the options for each individual situation. And then I think that, um, everything we're talking about. We need to be thinking comprehensively and holistically about how we change or add tools to the toolbox. Based on the actual desires of the people who would be using these tools. And that's sort of piggybacking on what Brian's saying is, and again, I'm gonna harp on research. I, you know, I was harping on research to understand need. And then I wanna harp on, on talking to people about what they might avail themselves of. If we were to create it or change it. Um, and then when we go to the community and ask for zoning changes and ask for ground cover changes. It is part of a comprehensive narrative that talks about our holistic solution for addressing year round housing. Rather than what we've tended to do, which is one thing at a time, and the context gets lost. So.
Thank you.
It's a good point. All good points.
Maybe just another comment or two on this, because I wanted to move on from our last piece. You all talked out on this one?
We never talked out, but I've only.
I'll just add that there's so many good ideas, and I think they all point to no capacity in our planning department. I mean, we have an open rec right now, a senior planner. It's been open for a long time. We never talked about it. I'm, I'm not saying it never gets talked about, but the planning board and the NTC do not talk about it. Um, and we, like, this, this stuff is so hard, and volunteer civic leaders can't do it. So we need more capacity in house. And, and, you know, I years ago floated the idea that we could, if we couldn't find people and get, bring them. Could form a, like, satellite planning office with Nantucket employees with planning skills. And put it right next to MIT, you know, where all these people graduate from. But we need more capacity to, to answer these questions.
Thank you. So there are planning projects going on. There's the master plan, the select board's about to start their strategic planning process. The housing production plan. Um, there are probably other plans I don't even know about. Um. And so the question is, you know, what opportunities do you see? In any of these planning processes that are either going on or enough to start? That might help to address some of the things that you've talked about today.
I think, I think that one of the biggest things that it's already been said, but is to identify and drill down on what types of housing.
Yes.
People. Or, or look, or want, and these.
Uh, need. To some extent, you don't wanna, oh, you don't wanna build the three bedroom.
That's right.
For someone who.
We, as a trust, we often say, it's not one size fits all.
Because then they're like, oh, that's the price tag.
Right. And the flip side of that is there's this feeling, and I've heard this, and it, I, I'm embarrassed to even say it, but there's this thing about. Oh, well, you're gonna build it and then they'll come, right? And it's racism, that's what it is. Is underneath that. And then they say, well, why can't we have a bunch of stuff that looks like Monomoy Village? You know, for us.
Yeah, the Monomoy Village thing pops up once in a while.
Pops up all the time, too. It's something they did well.
And over there, housing. A really cute four, four cottages.
Yeah.
On Surfside Road.
Well, one's old, my mother's old house, so forget that. So Judy, if, uh, when Penny just said. Almost, beginning, almost what I was gonna say. Perception is our biggest problem in Nantucket. The public, of buying into things. It's hard because of what some of the things that Penny mentioned, but also when we talk about a forty B. Forty B is like. Out the window over here. It doesn't even make any sense, okay? A house that's on a thirty five hundred square foot lot itself for two million dollars across the street from me. In the forty B that nobody wanted, by the way. But the, the affordable units are way less, so it's like this. It doesn't make sense here, okay? It might make sense somewhere else, but not on Nantucket. The shy list, obviously, that's key to keep those from coming in. There's not much land left for a forty B anyway. But. When you talk about housing, that term housing is like, it's. It's like, you, you know, it's, it's, it's a buzzword. And it really isn't, it's if you know what's going on with housing, and that's what Christie has been working on. It's unbelievable how much she's been able to do. The bad press about Wiggle's wave was ridiculous, and unfortunately, that's kinda stuff happens here. If you, you're gonna get some negativity with things, it just happens. It's like the steamship. Don't get me going. Oh, my God. So anyway, it's. I really believe that we can pass some of the stuff that we've talked about at the town meeting, the ground cover bonus thing is nothing. Like, you won't even notice it. It's a lot better than a subdivision, okay? But it has to be presented clearly. That isn't sound like we're trying to build Nantucket out of its problems, because that's another thing that people say, we can't build our way out. Okay, we're selling our way out, though.
Yep.
We're selling out Nantucket, okay? I'm lucky. I love talking about my freeland. Love it. They're about four thousand dollars before acres. But other people helped me, my parents and my, uh, and all that. But that was a hundred years ago. Okay? My fathers really got freeland, okay? Like, really for free. And now Santa Field and his baseball field is now on the market for four million dollars, and he sold that lot for twenty grand in nineteen seventy sevenish area, eight. Okay, so somebody with a calculator in this room is way smarter than me, needs to figure out. How much our values have gone up just in, since the boat went to Hyannis in nineteen eighty five. That is the year that Nantucket flipped the switch. And it just became accessible. The station wagons with the stupid surfboards and the stupid coolers. And all the junk in the back that would come in here for a, a two month stay in a cheap little cottage in Surfside is over. Okay, that's just not how it is anymore.
Solution.
So my point is, the solutions are complex to explain to the general public. That is our biggest challenge.
Okay, so how can these planning processes that are either going on or about to start? How can those processes help to address some of these issues?
Yes, well, we can start doing no planning with community support, and we can. Put, um, put a timeframe on getting this master plan done. I don't see any path to getting the plan done. You know, I mean, we don't, we can't even have a schedule about when we're getting it done because people have so much other stuff that they have to do. So we have to plan with community support in that. Well, we, we do have a schedule now, but it's based on like, we'll finish this.
Can we cut down on those little jabs? Just a little.
Whoa, 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 stop. Yeah, that's fine. We don't need this, really. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'd like to see us plan with community support to build trust, so that when we ask people to sacrifice, they'll trust us that it's for a good reason. And I do think that that's a, a very serious problem. Why we can't get things done. And I have some experience in that. And then the other thing about that, to quote you, that we're selling out Nantucket. A wonderful thing that we could all do to stop selling out Nantucket is to get behind the planning board article, Article Two at Special Town Meeting. Because in my, this is my opinion, and there is an issue, but I know there are people in the corner that don't agree. But you, short term rental and the vacation properties are inflationary, and they're a problem for, um. You know, can lots that maybe have a ranch house that is a naturally occurring affordable house. And the reason why it is selling for so much more, making all of the people around it have to have higher property taxes. Is because in part of the rental and the resort development potential. So there is an article that will limit that. It does not reduce that. It allows ninety percent of rentals to sell out. So I think that that is something you could be from a planning perspective to help our community, can to build trust among the people who need housing.
I, I just, I just need to comment on the, on the soapbox there, just to the opposite side of the conversation, because it's an inappropriate thought. The demand will not go away.
That's right.
Right. And the, the.
Unless we shut the jetty.
The economics that exist around a rental property today don't make sense to buy a rental property. But because the demand will stay, and it will increase the price of a rental. It will create more buyers of rental properties. And so more properties will sell. That are year round, and they will become rental properties. And then we, because the demand of people are coming. We saw this happen when there was some panic in the community about raising. The short term or the occupancy fee by eleven point seven percent. The demand community ate that up and spit it out and moved on, and they paid the higher price. They're going to pay the higher price. It is going to make property values go up and become even more unattainable, and it is going to raise the taxes. On the individual people that are living here that can't afford the roof or their insurance. And it has nothing to do, i- it's, it's a problem because anytime we've seen a restriction go in, like the building cap, we got more building. And this is a, this is a clear example of a restriction creating greater demand.
You're not answering the question.
I, I was trying to.
So, uh, you just hang on. I understand that, but I'm gonna stop this about SDR articles at a town meeting.
Thank you.
That's not the question. The question is, how can you use these upcoming planning processes to address some of the concerns? That you have that have been discussed here? Not what's gonna happen at town meeting. I'm sorry, but.
Thank you.
I've worked on this island in different capacities for ten years, I think. And one of the things I gotta tell you about, that's so interesting about Nantucket, is you guys love to fight. You guys can fight better than any town I have ever worked in. And at some point. I want you to stop, and I want you to plan, and I want you to focus on. Things that you actually can do something about. And one is to improve your planning processes here. So you've got opportunities coming up, and that's what I want you to talk about. And if anybody goes off on, say, any other, any other tangent, it's going up on the parking lot, all right? Um, somebody had. Planning.
Yeah, planning, planning. How can planning, how can we do planning and make it more successful? Show pictures. Show that, you know, this density of row houses on Silver Street or, you know, Silver Street parking lot or wherever. Show how nice it looks. Show that it looks just like downtown Nantucket. You know, show some of these areas as they've chan- changed. But they're gonna look way better. Like, show them how they're gonna look really better. We plan it well and we design it well. With, then, in standards, and maybe people will be more receptive to it. They, 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 everyone's worried about something they don't know, but we have the most beautiful downtown, and we don't copy it. So let's start following our own built pattern and copy it for the density that we need.
Okay, thank you. Tom, did you have something you wanna say, or were you just trying to get me?
Yeah.
Dave, Brooke, how about Dave, and then we'll get to Brooke. Or Dave, did you not have something to say? Am I, I can't read the screen from here, so.
He's nodding out.
No, I, I'm good, Judy, thanks.
Okay, okay.
We need to reconcile the notion of scattered site, affordable housing with density in certain locations. There's a, there's a inherent catch twenty two in the way we talk about those two things, and we need to address it. And I think it, it, it was evident earlier when, when one person mentioned we should. Give ground cover bonuses in Lug Three, and another person said, no, we should be building where we've zoned for density. Um, are we building affordable housing in Pulpus, or are we building housing? You know, are we focusing where we can get, um, more units for the cost with higher density? Um, or are we doing both and why?
So, the planner in me has to ask, you know, Brooke, with the planning process, how do you then get the information you need? To even do that analysis and answer that question?
Judy, don't yell at me, but I just wanna add one little thing.
It's not, I don't wanna hear it.
It is about planning.
What is it?
When John mentioned Tom Nevers, I didn't think of this right away. Tom Nevers is a lot of locals in these gigantic lots. It's, it's, it's a complicated area. It's massive. Huge tract of land that's got essentially. Four zoning districts, but it's really three. As far as it's one district, LUG three, but it's got three. Four different lot sizes, including about fifteen lots that are.
Yeah.
Over four acres. It's kinda crazy. My point is. Saving Tom Nevers from all being summer homes. Cause they will be one at a time, over time, pretty much, except the little ten thousand square foot lots. That's one of the reasons about the ground cover idea. You never, again, ground cover bonus isn't like giving away the store. My God, it's n- zero compared to what we really need. But it's a way to incentivize programs that we already have, okay? To give a little more because it's not working anymore. Just like, when a covenant gets put in, it steals the ground cover from the primary lot. That is unbelievably, it's wrong. Depending upon where it is, the existing ground cover of the house, there's so many different moving paths. That can re- be improved, and we could do that. I don't even know if that stuff has to go to town meeting or not, for all those things, but it is fixable, and that is planning. That isn't giving the store away, that is planning.
So.
So, anyway, thank you.
The point is. Identifying the problem, understanding what the issue is, and then deciding what information you need in order to make a decision. And so I'm hearing the decisions.
Yeah.
And I'm not hearing what's the information needed and how do you impart it? So, before, when you speak, I want you to address that.
Welcome, Sally.
There are so many pre-existing planning tools today that have been created over the last five years by the PLUS Department. That are not successful yet because the community of developing or the people that have the properties that they could be executed on don't know about them.
Okay. Okay.
And before we create more planning in more potential, not that we don't need more, but we should focus on what we have and communicating that effectively where it can. So maybe there is a planning study to say, there are this many oversized lots that could have two covenant. Let's communicate that to all of those property owners. And how do we go about doing that versus trying to move the needle in this fifty one, forty nine percent community on whatever the topic is and create more? Because there's a ton of tools today. There are about to be a lot more tools in a few weeks when the seasonal communities.
Yes.
Act, act goes into effect.
Made a regulation.
The regulations come into effect and we understand what those opportunities are. And how do we get them out there? Because if we get those out there, we are going to see a lot more housing opportunities, like the, what I read today allows for tiny homes.
Yes.
You know, so how, and then how do we bring back cottage communities at a timing in a way that the community is ready to see it, hear it and do it?
Okay.
Um.
Yeah.
Agreed. Yes.
So to Tom Nevers and to the lugs, I had a client that was going to carve out a little space for someone to move house. And I was worried about the impact, but when you stake that up with a pipe hole, same story. She's like, this is great. It's going to be, you know, and I did a plan of landscaping, did a three D sketch so she could see there was going to be no impact to the street. And I think that's really smart. If we can show a couple of examples, I think that that would be a really useful tool for us to use. So.
Yeah. Showing pictures, showing examples, showing plans, that kind of parcel analysis. You have GIS capability here. I mean, the question is articulating the question so you don't have somebody running off.
I think it's the owner of those lugs sites for not being nervous that they're going to like lose something or view or.
But I think even understanding how many potential opportunities to add for say ground cover, it's like, you do have the technology. When you have the staff capacity, I'm not commenting on that, but the technology is here to do it.
I think we should be looking at info opportunities. We should be doing an analysis, especially in and around town of potential that's not been realized.
I think we should work with, work through what we have and promote it and show examples of it and get community support before we make any more changes, to be honest.
And so maybe.
And let the people know what.
So even before we bring any major, like major debt exclusions, I think we need to work with what we have, promote it. Stop dividing the community and stop making changes.
So maybe through the planning.
And fill, and fill the open positions and provide housing for them so that we can fill them.
You know, so I think part of the challenge for all of you in a planning context is how do you, is communication with the community. And I'm not, I, God knows, there's a lot of communication that comes out from your community. I can tell you this firsthand, um, you know, the newsletter that goes out and so forth from, I think Libby, are you, is it your office that generates that?
I have one and.
Yeah. And I mean, I got, most towns don't do that. So there is a lot of information that gets out here, maybe thinking about how, what is it that people are not getting that perhaps they, they need to understand what's going on. Um, those, those are classic planning process questions. Classic, classic ones.
Then maybe we can.
I, I think a lot of that is how does it affect me, right? Do I read a newsletter and how does it affect me? So let's target those properties and say, this is how it affects you. You can do an extra covenant mod. You could have a ground cover bonus. You could, and so, and to do that, you could monetize, you know, this, this and this. You could have a teacher of this, of, of somebody living at your, your property. And I think it's important for, to communicate directly to people. You know, in this age of emails that all get filtered and such, people still, I don't know. I still like to open my mail and see what it says. I don't get anything.
Can't keep up. They don't know what they can do and then it changes.
Right.
But I, I think it's also frustrating. You're working for down the months, getting it ready for the planning board and, and the planning board and getting it to town meeting and then you get in town meeting and people are asking questions that are completely irrelevant, that had nothing to do with it. And it's like, why are we having these meetings? And what's so, I think to your point, like how does, you know, I think it was said Lincoln. Like, how do you get that out? And that's would be a really useful tool. And I think Libby and I had a conversation about this one.
Just to be honest, people will still show up at Lincoln Town Meeting who don't know what's going on. But what I think the state of the town meeting does for them is at least make sure officials understand what's going on. Because they've spent a day talking about this stuff. So the ability to kind of build comradeship between boards, uh, or, or perhaps tweak proposals so that they can get to a better state. I think that's the value of that, you know? But you're still going to get people showing up at town meeting who have no idea what's going.
No, that was like the master plan that we had in the high school. I, there was three people at our desk at the end and they said, I feel more positive on Nantucket. I walked in, I'm like, I, I don't like Nantucket. I'm going to stop this. And when they left, they were like, this was really informative. And I think that was nice to hear.
That is nice to hear.
You know, so.
I can't imagine somebody not liking this town, but that's just been. Um, so we are.
Yeah.
I think it's more of a penalty law. Here, one minute from six and I promise we will not go beyond six. So, um, I got number one, one, thank you. Frankly, enjoying this for Joel. Uh, the second thing I want to point out is, um, if you wanted to say something that you didn't get a chance to say, uh, either I trucked you off or because somebody else took you off, um, about the sort of, we put up on these, um, uh, large sheets of paper and content that's in that agenda. But if you have any thoughts on, uh, you know, sort of distinct housing goals or the comment on the division statement or whatever, that have to do with how can you sort of use this to get at some of the issues we've talked about for native and just put it on a post-it note and you can stick it up there because it will be taken into account. We are going to generate, you know, a follow-up report from this. And I, I have actually some ideas about maybe a sequel, um, but we don't want you to leave without making sure you've got your ideas in front of us. So you could put a post-it note up there. We're not leaving right away, but I have a feeling some of you probably even have kids who want to eat or dinner tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something before we leave that we have had a conversation that, um, we would like to have a follow-up to this after the select board has their strategic plan meeting.
Yeah.
In October. So probably after the special town meeting.
I think that would be great. I also think maybe thinking about having a sequel meeting just with the staff might be a good thing to do. We've got staff who sat through this whole thing, um, patiently listening. And I think there's a, there's a dimension to this that perhaps needs staff and George as well. So we can talk, but thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
So everybody, everybody has to end their, um, everybody has to, I'll go last.
I do.
Second, what?
Uh, by rule call, first spell, I, Penny Day.
I.
Harry Mack.
Hi.
Sean John Murphy.
Hi.
Brian Felden.
And Abby.
Oh, Abby, sorry.
And Brooke.
Oh, and Brooke, thank you.
I.
Okay.
That's right.
For health, I guess we went, we went second for so. Yeah. All, all in favor, I guess we have to.
Yeah.
So we're all here. Yeah.
Done. You want to go?
Dave, do you want to do it?
Why don't you guys do it? You're in the room.
Make a motion to adjourn. Letting go of second. Those in favor, Hillary? Go, I, Dave.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Beautiful sight, nice view of all sight. Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn. All this inferior by rule call, Matthew.
Hi.
Tom Dixon.
Hi.
Brooke Moore.
Hi.
Melvin McNabb. And I'm an I. Thank, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave.
Good night. Good night, Dave.
Thanks, folks.
Or good morning.
Good morning. We'll, we'll see you in a week.